Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us this afternoon. Sorry, executive session ran a little long. First item on the work session is preliminary agenda review. A regular session next week at 7:00 PM. I'll call it to order, I'll give the invocation. We'll have the pledge of the flag, we'll have our announcements. The meeting schedules in October are the 6th, 13th, and 20th. They're all work sessions at 4:00 PM, the regular session at 7:00 PM. We will have an appointment to the Board of Traffic and Parking. We'll have some guests from High Lake Hagerstown Award and Proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We will have in-person citizen comment, but you can also email any comments in. They are due no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 29th. We'll adopt the minutes of August 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th. As always, under consent agenda, if you have any questions, please stop me. Under the Department of Parks and Engineering, we have alley reconstruction. The material will be presented to us. We have Phase 1 tree planting, Advantage Landscape and Construction, Inc. of Hagerstown, Maryland, not to exceed $190,000. Lighting improvements over the BMX Track, ALC Weaver Electric, Hagerstown, Maryland, $160,441.05. Kerbin Sidewalk Replacement Program, Concrete Central, Hagerstown, Maryland, $225,000. A 2021 Chevy Silverado 2500 Heavy Duty Pickup Truck from Criswell Chevrolet, Inc., Gethersburg, Maryland, for $40,847.69. Under the Department of Planning and Code Administration, have demolition contract for 216 Stop Prospect Street. Allaganing Wrecking and Salvage LLC out of Morgansville, Maryland, Under the Department of Public Works, we have traffic cameras for pavement preservation program, Econolite out of Glen Burnie for $29,640. Under utilities, under wastewater, we have scatter upgrades, Microtech Designs, Inc., Hampstead, Maryland, Wastewater, we have maintenance agreement for Cummings E&amp;R Generator Set, Cummings Power Systems LLC Glen Burnie, Maryland, Under unfinished business, the approval of ordinance amending sections of Chapter 238 Water of the City Code. The approval of ordinance amending sections of Chapter 240 Water Pollution Control of the City Code. The approval and annexation resolution for Cold Road Properties. Under new business, the introduction of ordinance, the sale of House Landmark Overlay. Introduction of ordinance, Sanitary Sewer Easeman, North Point Development LLC. Introduction of ordinance, transfer of Stormwater Pond and Professional Boulevard to the city. I have an approval resolution, fuel cost reimbursement agreement with Community Rescue Service. Approval resolutions, new services contract with Hart's Landscaping, its new removal LLC. The approval of resolution, financial incentive agreement with Hagerstown Commerce Center, Inc. The approval of funding for ice and sports roof installation improvements. The approval and agreement for BMX Track improvements, reimbursement agreement. The approval of the city center holiday parking program. The acceptance of SCBA firefighters grant. And the approval Barbara England School for the Arts, Bischof Foundation Holiday Lamp Post Decorating Project. We will have the city administrators' comments and the mayor and council comments, and then we'll adjourn. Any questions on next week's meeting in the consent agenda? Okay. Under recreation update, Amy Riley?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Amy Riley with Parks and Recreation. Thanks for having me this afternoon. I am here to give you an update on recreation. So as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to challenge us as a community, our commitment to offering safe, innovative, and quality programming has not changed. What it has taught us, especially in the spring, was to think outside the box and to adapt a new virtual recreation mindset. So as you know, in the spring, we had to quickly figure out how we were going to conduct most of our programming. And we were very successful in taking a lot of our programs that we had coordinated to an online virtual experience. So we're going to be continuing that in the fall. And we have a lot of new virtual options that I'm going to share here in a bit. But this photo is one of our belly dancing virtual classes that our instructor does from home. And we have several folks taking that class, and they're enjoying it. We're also looking to how to continue annual events with careful creative planning. We have some new events coming up this fall. We're doing outdoor movies. We just had one in the park on this past Saturday. We showed the Goonies. And that was part of Fall Fest. We had to kind of reinvent the wheel on Fall Fest and offer some safe options for people to gather and enjoy something outside. And we also had some virtual options throughout the day. But we're also taking the Harvest Hoedown on October 10th, and we're showing the Addams Family in lieu of the Harvest Hoedown because of the potential of that event to draw large crowds and opportunity to save some costs to the budget as well. We're also taking our annual dog costume parade and the city park lighting. We're going to make those virtual events. So the dog costume parade will be a contest online where you can submit photos of your pooch. And the city park lighting will do a virtual kickoff where we'll light the park for the evening, and then we'll encourage folks to come out that evening to see the lights. Or actually, throughout the month of December, they can see the lights all month. And we're adding a lot of new light enhancements this year. And I also want to thank the park staff because they continue to do such a good job on improving our parks. And we couldn't do it without their hard work and making our facilities beautiful and encouraging people to come out and visit the parks. And again, our programs really help the quality of life in our community. And at this time, we truly believe they provide a much-needed relief from the stress and anxiety of the pandemic. So we really want to try to offer as much as we can in a safe, comfortable environment. So today, I wanted to just kind of give you a showcase of our new fall/winter digital guide. And actually, this season, it's digital because we couldn't... Well, we decided to not distribute it for obvious reasons, for actually printing it and distributing it. So we're going to offer it digitally. And I wanted to show you how you could navigate our new digital guide online. Hopefully, this works. So if you go to our website under Parks and Recreation, you'll see you'll have the opportunity to flip through the new fall/winter digital guide. And really, you can flip through it just like you would a book online. We just finished the guide two weeks ago, and a lot of our new programs are rolling out in September. So I'm just going to kind of flip through the guide with you. We did mention in the beginning of the guide about COVID-19. And we do encourage pre-registration for a lot of our programs. So we know who's coming. We can kind of monitor capacity of who's participating. And we always say to look for changes. Things can change, as we know, and to follow us on Facebook. And that if you're sick, please stay home and don't participate. And we also had a lot of fun making the guide. We did a fun Zoom picture, as you can see, on the top right corner of our staff. And I wanted to thank our staff, Emily Conrad and Cassie Hirschberger. It was very time-intensive to put all of these programs together and get them into the guide, get them into active, upload them on our website, make them available for registration. It's a tedious job, and I appreciate all their help. But as you flip through the guide, you'll see that we list all of our programs coming up. We have Page 4 actually is a great tool for us as event planners to kind of see a snapshot of everything we have coming up for the next six months. You'll see that we've kind of categorized it by virtual. We have 20 new virtual programs that we're rolling out. And you can see the timeframes of when they come during each month. And then we are continuing some outdoor programs, like ghost tours and a new canine life skills class. And we do have some indoor programs as well, which again, will be subject to smaller class sizes and some guidelines that folks have to follow. And then as you flip through the guide, you can actually hover over the activity numbers. And it takes you right to our ActiveNet webpage, and you can register. So several of you probably already have an account if you've registered for programs or the 100-miler. So it's very easy to navigate through ActiveNet. You can either sign in or create a new account. But ActiveNet continues to be our tool for online registration. So as you flip through the guide, there's more descriptions of the programming to give you some more details. Shelley, you might be interested in strength training. We are actually offering a virtual online strength training. Scott, you might like baseball in the American Civil War. It's a free class, who knows? Whoops, I'm going too fast. But again, you can hover over any link. Whoop, did I go too fast? But you can hover over any link and get more details about each program. It either takes you to ActiveNet or our website to learn more information. And then we get into the event section of our program guide. We, as I mentioned, we're taking the dog costume parade virtual this year. And if you click on the ad for the dog costume parade, it takes you to our website for that event. And you can learn more about that on that page and then register as well. That's in October. And we also sell ads in the guide to help cover the costs for design. We have the Fine Arts Museum was an advertiser this year. The Ice and Sports Complex, FedEx was an advertiser. So we look for those to help offset the costs of produce the guide. These are our events coming up for the fall/winter season. Walk Maryland Week is coming up in October. We actually took it from a day-to-a-week-long program where you can log miles virtually. And we're trying to walk the state of Maryland 250 miles. That's in October. And as I mentioned, we have the virtual dog parade, outdoor movies, ghost tours, an outdoor drive-through trick-or-treat, which I'll get to in a minute, and the city park lighting and some others. So our newest event is a drive-through trick-or-treat. A few months ago, we were trying to think ahead for alternatives for Halloween because we weren't sure if it was going to be able to happen or not. So we partnered with Manning Media, and we're doing a drive-through. It's $5 a carload. You get the kids in the car, drive through Fairgrounds Park. We're going to have, try to have about 20 vendors set up along the road. And as you can stay safe in your car and drive by and trick-or-treat throughout the park. And partial proceeds of that program will benefit the American Cancer Society. And that'll be on Thursday, October 29th. Other highlights of the guide, you can rent the fit room during, for holiday parties. Our newest information on that is that we added a COVID-2019 cleaning fee to assure that the facility will be clean in between rentals. We're partnering on a new program, Learn to Play Croquet. That's going to be in Pangborn Park on Friday evenings. Teen volunteer opportunities still exist if kids still need to get their SSL hours. At the Hager House, we're going to continue ghost tours. We have new virtual programs that we're rolling out. And we also have merchandise that you can purchase for the holidays. And at the golf course, we have some golf lessons, golf clinics. We're doing Par for Pink in October. And we're excited to announce we already sold out of that tournament, and we're adding a second tournament in October for Par for Pink. And again, just more information about events. We do sell gift cards for holidays, for holiday gift ideas. We have merchandise available, golf merchandise. And the guide wraps up with the 100-miler. And we hope you all participate in the 2021 100-miler, which will be in its eighth year this year, which is hard to believe. Just two other things I wanted to update you on. We received a $10,000 grant from the Maryland Area Housing Authority. And we're going to be installing and developing a new Founder's Trail footpath at the Hager House. So this will offer a self-paced visually-guided tour experience on foot. We're hoping to have it installed in 2021 of spring. We're working on the themes. There'll be four new panels that we're putting in the park. We're looking at Walk Through History, Springs at Hager's Fancy, Founder's First Home, and Pieces Left Behind. And here is a photo of the current panel that we most recently did, the Mount Etna Canon Sign. So the new panels will look a lot like this as a design concept. You'll see those around the Hager House. And this is the proposed plaque locations around the park. So if you're not able to come see the Hager House when we're open for limited times on Fridays and Saturdays between April and October, you can come check out the new footpath. And lastly, I wanted to share that the golf course is doing excellent this season. We've seen a 19.5% increase in revenue. If you go there, you'll notice there's no, barely any carts when you go. The course is crowded. People are having a great time. The greens are in excellent condition. I want to give a shout out to our greens keepers, Danny and Brian. They do an amazing job. We're seeing a lot of new golfers that have never used the course before. We had to buy new golf club sets to accommodate people who wanted to try the sport. We have a lot of new golfers trying it out. And we're hoping to stay open year-round, weather permitting. So we hope for a mild winter. That's all I have for now. Thank you. I'm here to answer questions, or you can email me if you want to get registered.
There is no shortage of things to do, that's for sure. That's awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Amy.
And just to say, instead of waiting till comments while they're here, you know, in the middle of this pandemic, when people were really looking for things, you know, to do to get their mind off of, you know, what they were dealing with in April and May, this department really stepped up, not only in the programs they offered to make sure they were safe to be able to still participate in, but also on the virtual side of things, doing a lot of things virtual, stepping out of the box to provide that release from the stress that we were all dealing with in the very early days of the pandemic. So I can't thank these guys enough for the effort and the work that they put in and how they continue to be able to still have the programs they have, but make sure that they're safe through their COVID plan that they put together as a department in coordination with our city COVID plan. So I just want to make sure you all get the recognition you deserve for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Rodney, Waste Management Contract.
Good afternoon. With me is Pat Harady, the Regional Manager for Waste Management. Waste Management's been collecting our solid waste for the last three years. We awarded that contract in January of 2018. They take the trash portion of it to the landfill in Upton, and we dispose of it there for $40 a ton. The contract's going very well from our perspective. Any issues we have, they deal with in a prompt and professional manner. That contract now expires at the end of this calendar year. But because we don't like to keep changing vendors that do this work very often, we wrote in an extension clause in the contract for an additional three-year term. And we're recommending to you tonight that we have you approve that three-year additional term. Given the kind of volatility of the recycling market and price fluctuations and the potential for, you know, that the recycling has to be free of trash and any contamination, I was a little bit nervous of what the price increase we would see. But what they're proposing is basically a 2% increase, cost of living increase, which is exactly what we budgeted for. So our recommendation is to move forward with that. Pat, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, I mean, I think you covered it pretty well. We're very fortunate to be able to partner with the city of Hagerstown and this contract. And it's a privilege to do it. And we certainly hope that you do vote to extend that contract for us.
What about the electronics?
So just wanted to get your opinion on the electronics recycling. It's something that we've done pretty much every year over the last few years. I think the public generally likes it. It's for city residents to deliver to the stadium parking lot any electronics that they want to recycle. Last year, we added a paper shredding component of it that seemed to be pretty popular. Last year, we spent about $13,000 to put on that program. We hauled away three tractor-trailer loads of items for recycling. Because of COVID, the Waste Management has to use their own in-house labor. They can't, as we say, rent labor for that day. So there'll be some additional costs. It could go up as high as $16,000 if we get about the same amount of items that we got last year. I'm a little bit nervous in that people have had free time to clean out their house and do different things like that. That tonnage could go up, and that means it could, if it doubled, if the tonnage doubled, we got four tractor-trailer loads, it would go up to 22,000. I don't think that'll happen, but I think there's a possibility of that. I guess I just wanted to get your opinion if you wanted us to move forward with that program. It would be on November 7th if we did it. The additional costs we would find funding for in other portions of our trash, solid waste budget. So I guess I'd just like to hear if you want us to move forward with that, or...
We've already budgeted for the normal amount.
The 13,000?
Yeah.
Yep. So it's the additional three to nine more, 9,000 more, potentially.
Any thoughts?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. I think citizens would appreciate all their hard work trying to consolidate their old electronic stuff this, during the pandemic. Give them someplace to put it, rather than in the trash.
Part of the difficulty is retailers that you would otherwise take some things to, just haven't been taking it. You go to Best Buy, that has not been available for the last six months.
And the unfortunate thing is, if you don't offer something like this, those electronics end up in ditches and places they're not supposed to be.
Yep, on the side of the road.
Yep. Okay, sounds like it's a good...
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Ministers.
Just a couple of things, mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks for several departments. I just want to recognize them. Start with the Police Department. Did an excellent job with their Crime Task Force. Got a lot of guns, a lot of drugs off the street. Put a lot of bad people where they need to be. And they've also handled themselves with, as they always do, with extreme professionalism and regard to the citizens. And I would stack our police force up with any police force in the area in regards to that. And I think we all should be very proud of the work that they do. It's underpaid, we know that. It's under-recognized, but they go out day in and day out and do a great job. And I just want to recognize them for that. Also, the Fire Department's had a busy couple of weeks. They had a huge fire today outside of their jurisdiction that they did a tremendous job in saving what they did of that development. And they've had a very busy couple of weeks, and they also deserve the same type of recognition for the great job that they do. And again, I'd stack that Fire Department up with any in this area. And last, but certainly not least, Utilities Department, namely the Water Department, has had a couple of huge leaks, basically two huge leaks in the same day that really stretched them out. But they got the service turned around much quicker than what was anticipated. And, you know, a shout out to them for the hours that they put in to get both of those breaks taken care of. One right off City Park, right on Walnut Street, that could have been a really nasty one where it was located, but right next to a pressurized gas main, which they were able to identify and take care of real quick. So thanks to all them. And as always, you know, just thanks to the city staff that through this last eight months of this pandemic, haven't missed a beat in providing services, have come to work and gotten the job done for the citizens. And we'll never be able to thank them enough for what the dedication they've given to the citizens. And lastly, Sunday afternoon, again, dining on the streets. It was a beautiful day. Last Sunday to do it, 11 to 3 on South Potomac, first block of South Potomac Street. So if you haven't got to participate yet, please come down and check it out. Thank you, mayor.
Shelley.
I just have two things. I also want to commend our Police Department, who I agree are underpaid. But today during, I was walking downtown, and there were skateboarders that were making quite a bit of fuss in the square. And within minutes, the police officers showed up, and the skateboarders were removed. And it was just, you know, it's very gratifying to see our police officers and that presence downtown and that safety that, you know, to remove things that aren't supposed to be there. We also need a skate park, just saying. But also in regard to your dining in the street, to our dining in the street, I'm hoping that we can actually do it two days for the rest of this until the October date cutoff. I think that it might be a little confusing to our citizens. I would like to see if it could be, you know, Saturday and Sunday in the daytime. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I think it would be beneficial and less confusing because it's alternating, and I think that it's getting lost. So, but it's still a great, still fantastic. So that's it.
Austin.
Nothing to say.
Kristi.
Just want to reiterate or accentuate Scott's comment that it was, you know, paid firefighters and paid city apparatus that the city taxpayers pay for that left the corporate boundaries of the city today to provide service outside of the city in an area that they have no real obligation for city taxpayers to pay, to make happen. That is a county obligation for a county resource that the city receives no compensation when it does it in that repetitive nature on the city taxpayers' dime. The second thing I would note is, last week when I left the meeting, there was an individual coming down South Potomac at a high rate of speed on a very nice four-wheeler that obviously had no business being on the public street. I happened to notice two of those individuals Sunday evening when I was walking down Virginia Avenue on a route that I walk often with my children to the Big Dip, so they can get ice cream. And they were attempting, about 9:00 o'clock at night, to pass a car in the oncoming lane of the eastbound lane coming into the city. I would just say to the folks that think that that's okay, I certainly hope that they wreck and hurt themselves well before they would wreck and hurt somebody else.
Oh, my gosh.
I think I saw the same guy.
I think I saw him too. Is it yellow?
I mean, he was, I was pulling in the City Hall, and he came up. And I was like, well, that was a four. And sure enough, right behind me, and I'm like, mm, okay. Nice four.
They're very nice, very nice.
I... Okay, let's see, kind of threw me off. Yeah, I... You know, I appreciate what Shelley said about the skateboarders on the square. I know that Chief and I have had a conversation about it before. And listen, I understand, I get it, I do, I do, you know. But it's, you know, you're in an area you're not supposed to be. You're on skateboards. When you're coming down those steps, you break those steps up. It cost us to replace them. I mean, it's one thing after another. It's not just about skateboarding. So I certainly hope that at some point in time, we decide that it's time to confiscate their skateboards and let their parents come pick them up, you know. So, and I... And I want to echo Scott's sentiments about HPD and HFD and all of city personnel and, you know, the Parks Department and everybody. I mean, you've all done a fantastic job through this pandemic, and hopefully, something happens soon. We get a vaccine or something because it's driving everybody crazy. I mean, you know, you can get 50% capacity up to 100 people in a movie theater, but you can't do more than 100 people at the Maryland Theater when it seats 1,300 people. It just, it boggles my mind. There's no rhyme or reason to it, and hopefully, at some point in time, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we get back to some sense of normalcy, so. Having said that, thank you all very much for attending, and we'll adjourn. See you next week.